Morning. Morning, smile Gary.
Morning guys.
Four courts left after this. Y'all be grinning ear to ear. Are we on ready to? Alright, I think everyone's present. I'm just kind of Commissioner Corcoran daughter. It's the meeting in the Christmas court on Tuesday, 24th day of November, 2020. 8am it's now 9:35am. And if you'll all rise. County Attorney Scott Peel, soon to be Judge Peel is going to open us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for the cooler weather. Thank you for the opportunity to come for you and serve this community, Lord, and hopefully do your will. Lord, we just ask that discernment and good judgment and make provide for those of us who are providing advice or for those who are making decisions to make those decisions and work in your way and hopefully find you. Lord, we just ask that you give children a guidance, direct us in Jesus' name. Ask that we go into this holiday season, everybody safe and return safely to us. We just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Go ahead and read some of the pledges, Phil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, sir. Alright, everybody put the glasses on.
I got new contacts.
Well, it's just funny, I saw me and Jimmy both putting glasses on. Directing to the end of administration, Laura, any citizen comments? Alright, no citizen comments. We're gonna go, we're gonna start out 1.2. Let's kick them in the queue. Oh, wait a minute, this not. 1.2 discussing Senator presentation, Texas Association of Counties Management Pool Safety Award, County. You're gonna unmute him or? Good morning, Joe. You're muted.
Good morning, sir. How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good.
Okay, we're on your item on presentation, so whenever you're ready.
You're muted again, Joe.
Good morning, sir. How are you? So.
Okay, they're good.
Is that better?
Somebody's got some background noise.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Well, Chambers County has earned the 19 Excellence in Safety Award from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool for its record of excellence and involvement.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
So. Commitment to safety in the workplace.
Hold on just a minute, we got some background noise.
Somebody's got the YouTube stream up, and if you can close that, please.
Alright.
You gotta love this virtual stuff. So is it Joe that's getting open?
From Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool.
Does anybody have the YouTube stream open? Yeah, it's Joe. He's got the YouTube open.
Alright, go ahead, Austin. Tell Joe what he needs to do.
Hey, hey Joe, it sounds like you've got the YouTube stream open for the Commission's Court. If you please close that, the sound's feeding back. And then just unmute yourself whenever you're done. How he gone?
Alright, so we need to get them back, tell them to dial back in. We lost Joe. Okay, so Mary Beth's on the line, COVID update.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are y'all?
Good, you?
Okay, so we are, I guess, we are about eight, almost nine months into this now, so thank y'all for your continued support of public health during the pandemic. Of course, 2020 has not been a fun year, I don't think for all of us, so let me get right into the update. We did post numbers yesterday. We have 61 cases over the weekend, and last week was probably one of our worst weeks since July in new, new numbers of active cases throughout the county. So I do have some percentages that I will go into that with you real quickly. So we currently have 231 active cases in the county, which is a 285% increase in cases in, since October the 30th. We have five hospitalizations and 22 deaths. Our current positivity rate since the first of October, I mean, since the first of November is 18%. So I'm gonna break it down by age ranges and increase in percentages of age ranges just since the first of November, because this is really when we started seeing our spike was since the first of November. Pretty much over the past three weeks is really one of our cases of it started going up. In the zero to 10 age range, we've had a 25% increase in cases. Our greatest jump has been in our 11 to 20 year olds. We've had a 38% increase in that age range. And then in our 71 to 80 year old population, a 30% increase, and then our over 80 year olds, also a 30% increase. We have, and so let me break it down by parts of the county. East Chambers County, a 20% increase in cases. Mid Chambers County, 26%, which is our highest increase in case counts, is mid county, and West Chambers County, a 21% increase in cases. So, pretty much spread out throughout the county. We just see it, you know, countywide that our cases are going up. I did send an article from the New York Times last night to emergency management, as well as Judge Sylvia, and then our FEP coordinator and Dr. Brown, just showing that per capita in Chambers County, we're in the top 33% of counties, more so than any of the counties around us, of cases per 100,000. We have more cases per 100,000 per capita than any of the counties around us. So TDM has reached out to us to do some extra testing because of the amount of cases or the rapid increase in cases for our county of any other other counties around us. So it is concerning. I know that we have been pushing a lot of messaging, public health messaging, and we want people to try to adhere to that messaging. It's not overreach, it's not to try to instill fear. It's basically right now, what we have to do is use every tool in the chest. We want people to act responsibly and smart. You know, this is a novel virus. As we learn more, we're going to give updated guidance, and what we know right now is there's no vaccine. It is hopefully on its way, and we have to use what we know, which is social distancing, masking, frequent hand washing, and frequent cleanings. So, you know, I mean, it's just one of those things that there's public health recommendations made all the time. You know, USDA may come out and say, or they come out and say, you need to cook your chicken and your beef to a certain temperature, and if you undercook your meat, and you know that you have done that, you may take the health risk of doing that. But if you do that, you know, there's no public outcry against the USDA that you've done that. If you serve it to a crowd, you know, you're putting others at risk. It's the same thing, you know, let's just be smart and responsible, take that extra step in protecting others. So every virus behaves differently. COVID is just more virulent, is more contagious than other viruses, which is why we have to take that extra step. So we just want during this holiday season, just remind others to just act responsibly, avoid, you know, large gatherings, and wear your masks. I'll entertain any questions.
What's the new logo? Slogan?
So we have pushed some messaging out. I need to send that back out today. It's about a mask, you know, wear it, don't share it. So that's what we're trying to push.
They're back in the waiting room, so whenever. Okay. Um, I had a friend on dearly, just went to the ICU last night, COVID, he and his wife both got it. And another one, he and his brother and his wife all went to funeral and came back with it, so I seem to be hitting closer to home with me. I don't know about you guys.
It is, and you know, one of the things we want to remind people is, is that, you know, some viruses are definitely spread differently, and with this one, you know, it is spread, it can be spread 48 hours before disease onset. So every new person you come in contact with, they can have it and spread it to you and them not know it. They're just doing it unintentionally. And so that's why it's just so important that we're taking that extra step, because, you know, you can become infected and just not really even know it. And in a negative test, if you're on quarantine, a negative test doesn't necessarily mean that you still can't get it in that, in that entire 14 day period. So that's what's happening, is that, you know, virus is just spreading and throughout the county, and we have many more active cases than we did even just six weeks ago.
Alright, any questions, Mary Beth? Okay, Mary Beth, thank you, thank you. For to all our first responders, healthcare folks in the county and in the United States, I mean, everybody's doing a great job, so thank you very much. Alright, let's go, let's try 1.3, 1.2 again, excuse me, the Safety Award from TAC. Okay.
Hey Joe, if you will, unmute yourself.
Alright, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Excellent.
So, that's good.
I think we clearly established that I am your risk control consultant and not your IT consultant, so.
Hey, alright, so just start from the beginning, please.
Alright, good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you taking some time out of the schedule to throw me in, and I just want to take some time and recognize Chambers County for what you guys have done. I have a little message here from TAC, kind of like a press release format, and it says, Chambers County has earned the 2019 Excellence in Safety Award from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool for its record of excellence and involvement and commitment to safety in the workplace, as well as for controlling workers' compensation claims. To qualify for the award, the county must participate in TAC RMP's Workers' Compensation Program, have a safety program or accident prevention plan, and have an active safety committee. Through its commitment to safe practices among county employees, Chambers County works to reduce employee injuries and obtain substantial savings for taxpayers by minimizing workers' compensation costs. Governed by a Board of County Officials, TAC RMP has provided counties with protection against risks and liabilities for 40 years. TAC RMP's Risk Management Control Program and services delivered to more than 400 members to help Texas counties promote safety and save tax dollars. So basically, you guys have been doing a slam nut job. You've been maintaining programs, creating programs, developing all the programs needed to, to not only achieve this award, but to keep your employees safe and save some tax dollars. Ryan Holesapple has been doing a fantastic job, and I'm, I just want to note that I'm looking forward to working with Glenn. Your guys' focus on safety and creation of a new safety position is definitely going to help you going forward. You should be proud of the accomplishment. If I'm not mistaken, this is your third Excellence in Safety Award in a row, third year in a row, and I'm looking forward to continuing that relationship, and hopefully we can do some in-person training sometime in the near future.
Yeah, hopefully we can do a lot of that.
Yes, sir.
All different fields. Alright, any questions, Joe? Alright, so Joe, we appreciate it, and I want to say a motion to accept the award.
Move to accept the award.
Take it. Commissioner Calm, second back of Mr. Gore, and all those in favor. Commissioner TAC, oh, you're muted. Gary, you're muted too. I guess y'all didn't vote against accepting the award, did you?
I didn't. IT issues, yeah, I saw.
I voted for it.
Hear me. Yes, you're on our eye.
Alright, so thank you, Joe. We appreciate you and everything.
Alright, thank you all. You have a great week.
You too.
Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Going back to 1.1, discussing Senator Department update. Today, building maintenance. Mike is going to share. Mike.
Commissioners, Judge. Building Maintenance and Construction Department, 17 people, 13 of those are in the maintenance, two in construction.
I can't, you can't hear him very well. I want one second. Alright, let's try that.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
We're working on. I tried now, Mike.
Okay, is that better? Okay, so Building Maintenance and Construction has 17 people. 13 of those are in maintenance, two of them in construction, and then there's Bailey and me, that kind of go between and help, help a little bit of everybody. It's pretty, pretty crazy year this year, but we had some great things happen. We just put on a master electrician. I think he'll help our, our, our program a lot. We had a period of time where we actually were not working, so work order wise, we had 2,730 this year. In the 11 months, I guess you could say, but part of that time, we weren't working. We've replaced six HVAC units on the roof of various buildings. So these guys are staying busy. There's a lot going on. The construction side of things, I have a little PowerPoint program I'd like to show you of some of the new stuff coming up. Alright, so hang on just a minute.
I had to show Mike how to do that.
So. This is. So we're gonna talk about the West Side complex first. Later, I guess y'all will be talking about this in this court. So this is the West Side complex. This is the overall view of the complex. You've noticed, these are the fields. The new community building would be right there. The, the box site would be right here, and this would be the Runbridge Yard. So starting with the community center, it will be here. There's potential of 441 parking places. We're also using parking places to go with the fields, so we're, we're using the parking for two separate areas. The layout is basically pretty much like White's Park is, except for we're building this to handle 150 mile an hour winds, so we can have employees that can stay during events, so we're ready to go after the event passes. We're planning, this would be the outside side of it. It's gonna be a tilt wall building. So it's gonna be basically about the same kind of building. All of the, all of our units will be on the inside. They won't be on the roof or anything, so, so, so we can maintain our, our wind rating. The Runbridge Yard in this complex is.
Mike, where's on your photo? I just want to remind everybody that that's, that the community building and the baseball field is what we're replacing because the enterprise has banned out the cloud park. Go ahead.
Okay, this will be the Runbridge. You know, they got a couple off. This will, this will be, will take over for the West Side, their West Side. But we're giving up some more base for their, their trucks and stuff and a meeting room. So this is kind of the layout that we came up with. This is a shot of what it might look like on the outside. This building right here is about 5,500 square feet. So then the box site, box site's gonna go right in the bend. You know, we're gonna have the box site, we'll have the, you know, place for the oil and the tires and office and the restroom. It's kind of laid out, kind of like the one in Winnie is what we're shooting for. This is a shot of what it might look like. And then we got the baseball fields. The baseball field basically is, this would be the concession stand, which would include the, you know, the bathrooms and the kitchen and all of that. This would be what it might look like from the outside. And then I'll show you some stuff that are just going on. The, the library is, is going really well for all the COVID stuff that's hit and everything, so, and we're expecting this to be finished hopefully between the first and middle of February. But it's looking real nice. I'll show you some interior shots. Then the co-volunteer fire department, it's complete. We're just working on punch list of that right now. Got a, a few places that we need to force some concrete, but other than that, we're pretty, pretty done. Animal control is coming along. It's, it's really, we've, we've run into a few problems with, with the electrical. Entergy obviously had three storms hit them in Louisiana, and a lot of their people are in Louisiana. So things have gone a little slow there, but we still plan on completing this about the same time that we're gonna complete the library. Then other projects going on is, we have the George Carver Park Basketball Court. It's rocking and rolling. We ordered that building. The double bio community building renovation is complete. We're just cleaning up some punch list on that. The Schilling House, I hope you've noticed that it's got a new fence out there. We've worked on the Schilling Building. The, the bad news is, the Schilling Building probably needs a whole brand new roof. It's pretty much rotten away right now. So, but that's another, we're talking about. We're, we, well, we have to do it, or it's gonna. We're talking about a new, a new tax office possibly on the west side, new DA office complex. We're working on Historical Park Plaza and Park Cannon area, a county court complex, a financial complex. We've replaced the, the roof on the airport offices. We renovated JP 5 Court. It looks pretty good. You can go by and check that out. We've replaced probably 40 metal doors around the parks that were just deteriorating and rusting away. We finished up, you know, we did a lot of work on, on the meld up, you know, flood repair, especially Winnie Community Building and that kind of thing. So we did some code rewire over in Winnie. We've, we've made great strides with our gin sets. We probably, we've got 25 gin sets. We're gonna add four more here. Hopefully, we'll slow down on this process, but we've got a, we've got a, he's really helping, so we're gonna bring back the support to reduce some of the money that we're paying out for contractors to help us do some of the maintenance ourselves.
What's the dent set?
A generator. Sorry.
Hi, Mike.
Yes.
County wide, how many, you got a 17 employee crew. How many, how many buildings y'all taking care of?
There's, there's probably a total over 200 buildings. Now, you know, that includes, you know, restrooms, stuff like that.
You say that for, for that, for that size crew, I mean, y'all covering a lot of buildings.
Yeah, we got a lot of buildings and parks.
We, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, some of that, some of that parks, some of that parks helps with, and they just call us in like, like on the doors, you know. We, we go in and, you know, they've got a guy that'll do some of the minor electrical stuff. But now with our new master electrician, we're working with parks, and we're, we're, we're gradually gonna start working on all the issues that we have with the electrical.
Hey, Mike.
Yes.
Speaking of the doors, you're replacing metal doors. Are you going back with metal, or are you putting fiberglass on those that are corroding out?
Well, the problem is, is people try to break in, and most of these are in maintenance type areas, and they just beat them, you know, it, 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 any kind of other door other than metal probably wasn't the way to go, Billy, on some of these areas, because they're out in the middle of nowhere, and people try to get in there and do weird stuff.
One more question, Mike. What is the schedule on the West Side project?
The schedule on the West Side project is, we're hoping to bid it on the, on December 22nd. As far as we need to, from, from, the way we're gonna do it is, we're gonna bid the whole thing, because the, from what we're hearing, the cost of projects has come way down, so we're hoping that we get a pretty good number, and we get a contractor that's hungry and ready to go. As far as how long we think it'll take it to build, I don't think it'll take over a year. The problem would be, is when can we get started on the fields, and what kind of growing period will we get in? In other words, when can we start that process? So I would say maybe a year, a little over a year.
For the community building to be open?
Right.
Thank you.
A year from bid day.
I'd say, I'd say a year from when we give them a contract. How's that?
Yeah, it makes more sense.
Yeah. Uh, Mike, what do you update them on Fort Anaway Park?
Fort Anaway Park, we are working with the, with the architects on that, and what we have planned is that we need a concession stand there, so we, we, we had to drop back a little bit on, on some of the things that we could provide because of the money, so we're looking at maybe a concession stand and a ballpark or two, and being able to add on to that and complete the whole project of the whole four fields as we get the money.
Yeah, design it for the clog relief, but do one field, at least one field in the concession stand, and then next, next year, it's, it's gonna be.
So we put a, we put a hold on that, but, but we've released the architect back to working on that. So we put a, we put a hold on that, but, but we've released the architect back to working on that and getting that all ready to go. Uh, so, that's where we stand with that.
All right, what else, Mike?
That, that's, I, I've got tons of stuff that we've done as far as projects and stuff like that, if you need, need a list or something, I can give you that.
Hey, Mike, are we gonna have to um, are, are we gonna have Aqua come and bring us water and sewer or not?
On the west side?
On the complex.
The west side complex?
Yes, we're, w- w- right now, I'm thinking the bigger problem would be getting um, the IT part of it, getting the fiber and stuff like that over there, or internet over there, where, where uh, but I just now have started talking with Derek about that, of how we might get the IT part of it. Well, Aqua is not too far away, so I don't see a real problem with that.
Well, well, I thought, I thought the uh, IT had been corrected over to co-volunteer fire department, we couldn't, we couldn't uh, back off of that?
Doubt I don't know as far as where the, I'm just, I'm just getting with Derek on that, so I'd have to answer the IT part of it later.
Actually, Mike, Derek sent me an email yesterday afternoon, evening, and I apologize, I have not responded. He was trying to get contact for Comcast, and everybody I worked with in Beach City has since retired, but I am still working on trying to get a contact, Comcast does have service in the area, just a little bit uh, west of there.
Okay.
All right. Mike, thanks for that department update, just get on you guys, dude. Let's uh, go ahead, while you're on, let's go to your item.
Can't hear you, Judge.
Now, uh, let me, uh, it left me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so, you got Mike muted?
Back in now.
Which one we looking at?
Uh, hang on a minute, we, yeah, Austin just said we're juggling two computers in one room, so, even though your social distance is, distance, you still get feedback. All right. No echo? Okay, um, in my name, it's the building seven-one, discuss, et cetera, hiring, out bush with B K P Design Group, LLC for architectural design, the new freestanding tax office building to be located just south of the west annex. And, well, you estimated cost five hundred ninety-five thousand, design fee of seven percent, construction cost not to exceed fifty thousand. All right, uh, Austin, if you'll mute me and let Mike back in, please.
One.
We should stick, stick the mute. All right, go ahead, Mike.
Okay. We've actually, we worked with Al and we've talked to, to Commissioner Combs about this. Um, what we're looking at doing is putting um, kind of the, kind of a building about like the little strip center that they built, where was that? Over on, on uh, Eagle Drive, they just built a brand-new one, so. Back behind the.
All About You.
All About You, the one right behind All About You, anyway, what, what our initial thought was, is to build kind of like a, the start of a strip center that we could add on to later, uh, type of building, and start this one at approximately two to, say, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, depending on how the, the, the steel would lay out, would depend on what the square footage would be, but it would be around the two thousand square foot. And then, we could, we could give the tax office what they need, we could add that square footage, and then we, if, we could take that and expand off of it at a later date in the more, more room we needed.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
This, that price, does that include FF and E and everything, or what?
That does not include FF and E. Yep.
Okay.
Other question?
I believe you, I believe, I believe, I believe Aaron's answered this before, but where's those funds coming from?
He has, he answered the last call. He said he wasn't telling you again.
I, I think we had some in capital, I think that's what he said.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess.
I'll move to approve the item.
Before we do it.
Go ahead.
Hang on, let me read. Five hundred and ten. Number fifteen, approve the upgrade of the power line for the animal control building from single-phase to three-phase. Power from Intergy in the amount of nineteen thousand one ninety-six forty-four, Mike.
So, this came up that uh, they, they've kind of got me stopped because I won't do anything until I pay them to bring the, the, the uh, the power to the building, I really need the power to the building, so I need, I need to pay them to bring the three-phase there. The nineteen thousand is probably to bring the three-phase from down around the uh, emergency management building, which is about five to six hundred feet. Up Airport Road, and they're gonna have to take the single-phase all down and provide that, provide the three-phase. So nineteen thousand one ninety-six forty-four. I need to get it rolling so I can get the, get the job moving again.
What's the timeframe on that, if we go ahead and approve it and do it, well, how, how long you think, Mike?
I'm looking at, I'm, I'm looking at having that building done in February also.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, Mike, before we mute?
Sixteen.
All right, number sixteen. Proven competitive seal proposals, that's the delivery method for the west side complex right there, Mike.
So we're, we're planning to go out to bid uh, for the west side project on December twenty-second. Uh, and so we'd like to go out for uh, competitive seal proposals on the twenty-second of December.
Question?
Okay, all right, thank y'all.
Thanks, Mike.
Do you need a motion on that seven-one, Judge?
I made a motion a while ago, but didn't hear me.
There, there you go, Judge.
All right, you should be able to hear me now. Mike, you need to uh, turn your speaker.
Okay, there you go.
All right, yeah, we need a motion on, on seven point one.
Billy motion, made the motion, I second, Your Honor.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Mr. Tice.
Is that right, Billy?
Yes, sir.
No, I thought, hey, wait a minute, I got a question. Um, I thought, I thought we were gonna look at the, at the cost of this, and have they already done that?
Well, that's an estimated cost.
We talked about expanding this uh, this building over here, but then, then we talked about building another building because of the cost. But, but, you know, it's potentially, you know, detention and all the other stuff involved. Our costs may not, may exceed this number unless they've already done that research.
Mike, did you hear the question about, about the cost, um, i- i- estimated cost for everything involved in building the new building?
Do we own the property?
Yes, we own the property.
Okay.
I mean, right now, right now, we're.
Here, Mike.
Mike, why don't you just come up here?
Yeah, just come up here.
You don't have to stand, Mike, you can stand, but then you, are you gonna sit down?
So right now, we're talking about about two thousand square feet, so this is not a real big building as far as the detention and everything else, no, we haven't looked at the detention, we haven't even looked at what this building possibly could be square footage-wise in the future, so we could do, do the detention, so there's a few things that need to happen, but building a two thousand square foot building, if that's all you ever built, I'm sure that the detention that we already had won't work, I mean, but, like you say, you gotta go to the city and you gotta find all this out, and I'm not there yet, so.
We, we really don't have any detention here, Mike, I mean, everything's built before all this came into effect. I just know, and you, and you gotta figure parking too, uh, that you gotta, so you'll have to have some detention, because they had detentions in these uh, these little strip centers on Eagle Drive, right there by uh, it's a possibility the city's got some that they'll sell you, you know, there's, they were using some of that uh, a detention that was moved off of Eagle Drive, with that, with some of those discharge pipes that potentially we might be buy, but, but there's some costs there that uh, that might sneak up on us, as we, as I was saying, that uh, we really need to study, to analyze the cost that's gonna cost us to do this versus, you know, I know, I know Billy was talking about that, spending a lot of money and not increasing our space, per se, but um, we could still run into some pretty, pretty extensive costs there that, that we haven't, we may haven't calculated in.
Those are good points, but Al should be able to tell us that, right?
Well, hey, Judge, Gary, I spoke with, I spoke with Al about that, and um, you know, really, he thinks we can probably build a larger building. Yes, at that budget, that's about three hundred dollars a square foot, Al knows we gotta put detention in, and that's just a estimate of the cost based on his experience in doing other projects in there, it's actually kind of high, because uh, building supplies are actually high at the moment, construction costs in Mont Belvieu, uh, it's got a lot of weird uh, requirements. I mean, you're right, Gary, we gotta be cautious of what we're doing for detention, but Gary feels like the three hundred dollars a square foot should be adequate to, you know, to construct, and depending on what the cost is, the building may be able to get larger, you know, so we can play with it. I think currently uh, the uh, tax office has taken up about, what, eleven hundred square feet, Mike, something like that?
So, also, also, Gary, we were gonna reach out, people that built the strip center uh, down the street to, to find out what their square foot cost was and what some of their, their were. Uh, the judge has not made contact with those people yet, but hopefully within the next week or so, we'll have that information that we can go off of too. So we're doing some things to make this, to make sure that we're being responsible about this.
Well, I was just saying, I mean, we were moving forward, it seemed like, on this thing, uh, I don't know when those incidental cost, costs there, that's, that's all I was mentioning about. But yeah, I know, I know who built those buildings too, I mean, I can try to see if we make contact with them.
That's fine, Gary, you go, we're both working.
Okay.
Hey, Judge.
Sir.
Uh, can you ask Austin, I've got a big update required by our IT department that's covering uh, cover my screen up about thirty-three percent.
Yeah, he heard it in there now, okay.
When, when they come back with the cost, this on the scope will work for the fifty thousand, it is, it'll have all that in it, and then we'll have a, a halfway estimate of what FF and E is gonna cost, I mean, just a total of what, what it's gonna cost.
You can add.
Yes.
Whatever it costs, you can add another, say, twenty percent uh, for FF and E and, and some of the testing, that kind of stuff.
So Mike will have those estimates for you when he, when he come back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I got a motion in a second, those are.
Uh, Commissioner Tice just dropped out, uh, one second, we'll get him back in. Bean Hall, I'm just, hint, so I'll get him back into the vote.
Matt's already voted on it, but we're gonna vote it on again because Gary wanted to talk about.
I just didn't, I just didn't want us to get surprised, you know, I mean.
Yes, that's good.
We hadn't, I mean, it, it almost acted like we were trying to move forward with, with the project, that uh.
Well, I think, the design, and that's gonna tell us. Okay, so.
Mark, Mark and them probably share that information with us downstream.
Yeah, I just had Lauren text him, um, she was gonna email him Friday, and she couldn't find his email address, so she's gonna text him right now, we'll get those numbers, I'll share, I'll get Lauren to share them with you when we get them, Gary, and Mike. All right, I got a motion in a second, those are in favor. Uh, opposed, motion carries, going back to the first page. Under Roden Bridge, three point one, public hearing at ten AM to discuss renaming of County E W four to Johnny G Jennings Drive. Is it calling in, or is it gonna? Okay. Want you, want you to try them again. All right, so it's uh, ten twenty AM, we're going to recess out of the regular session of Commissioners' Court and go into public hearing at this time. Uh, Billy, I'm gonna let you kind of explain what's going on. If you'd like to.
Sorry, I was muted, my wife's been trying to do that to me for a long time.
That's what I said earlier.
Okay, uh, east to west corridor, which uh, we call E W four, has been on our books for many years. Uh, back when we first started, when ninety-nine started coming through, the Jennings family, uh, Mr. Jennings, he donated the land, the first six acres of land to uh, the county to start the corridor for uh, he did what we call E W four. So as a part of doing that, is the family donating the uh, first part of the land, it's been pretty much an understanding that this road would eventually be named after Mr. Jennings. So uh, that's what the notice was published in the paper for, and the notice that we would name E W four Johnny G Jennings Drive. And so that's uh, what the public hearing's about.
Okay, and there were no public comments came in, any, any public comments from Commissioners' Court?
I, I think, I'll make a public comment, I think it would be a nice gesture for the court to continue doing this.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Gary, after, you know, the family donated property, it's, all right, so uh, no other public comments, ten twenty-one AM, we'll adjourn out of the public hearing and go back into regular session of Commissioners' Courts. At three point two, discuss, consider resolution naming E W four Johnny G Jennings Drive, motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Mr. Nelson. Any other questions, comments? Those in favor? Uh, opposed, motion carries. Three point three, Cory's on the phone, uh, discuss, consider status update on Oak Street Bridge, Anawak, Texas, Cory? Cory, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can, y'all hear Cory, okay?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so Oak Street Bridge, we uh, bid that out, uh, accepted, uh, bids Thursday, we received two bids. One was three hundred and forty-nine thousand, and one was three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which uh, is quite a bit more than uh, what we had in tax note. So, I, since then, I talked to a couple contractors, uh, we've already kind of been looking at it, uh, originally, kind of wondered, um, you know, what the bid would be, being this uh, you know, it's this US bridge was the way that it was done, drawn by the consultant, uh, which was a little bit different element, and I was kind of concerned that it might scare the contractors a little bit, it, it appears that did. Anyway, the comments that we've got back is that if we went with a standard um, box covert situation, we could basically cut the project in half, cost-wise. And so we are currently analyzing to see uh, what the uh, effective uh, covert size we would need to be able to put that forth, so that's currently where we're at on the process. I would not recommend uh, accepting the bids uh, at this time.
So, well, it's not on agenda, so you'll put it on the agenda to accept or reject the bids, that's court, Cory?
Well, I, yeah, I just uh, yeah, let, let me get, bring back. Well, uh, yeah, I just, uh, yeah, let, let me get, bring back, uh, information to y'all, uh, let me finish, uh.
Okay, I make you a next.
Come forward with a formal recommendation.
I, yeah, at some point, whenever you're ready.
Wasn't asking for a formal, uh, you know, uh, request, I'm just giving you an update. Yeah, I, I don't look forward to bringing a recommendation to, uh, accept in the future, so.
Yeah, you, you, you're gonna have, probably gonna have to put it back on, well, I know you, reject those bids and then redid it. We're missing, redid it again.
Yeah, and that'd be with some additional information that I should have, hopefully by the next quarter.
Sounds good, any questions, Cory?
I, I do have a question, Cory, uh, at one time, we were building, we were gonna build that bridge with some kind of a kit, uh, Trinity Bay was looking into. Do, uh, if we go with these culverts, are we gonna have to get it, um, engineered to handle the water? That would, would go through the culverts versus the, basically the non-restriction of a bridge?
Right, yeah, the, uh, we've gotta make sure that we are handling the water, that we don't hold back water on the, uh, residents upstream and we don't flood anybody out downstream. So, that's where we've gotta find that balance at and making sure, uh, the, uh, the bridge that you're referring to, that kit is specifically, it was a US bridge kit, um, that was put in the plans, uh, and I don't know, apparently there was some type of understanding originally between, um, our consultant and Trinity Bay, uh, you know, Trinity Bay was originally gonna build this for us and with, uh, under the current situation, they couldn't do this, that's where we ended up going to, to bid it out. And, uh, anyway, like I said, uh, even though Trinity Bay, I think, might have been comfortable with it, or the consultants, I mean, the contractor world, uh, was a little bit concerned about it, so.
I think, I think the reason, the reason that was done back then is because they'd extolled some of these bridges before. And we felt like with the experience, that they, that they'd be able to do it without, you know, without any surprises. So that's, I think that's why that was used before.
And I, yeah, I think if we had have been able to, to have the prod, the bridge on site where they could have seen it and known what they're dealing with, might have been better, but the, the bridge itself was, uh, about eighty-five thousand dollars. So that exceeded our ability to be able to just buy it outright, cause it was above fifty thousand. So it required to be part of the bid, which just added a little measure of, uh, questions there.
So whatever we do, Cory, and I know you know this, that, that's a main drainage channel, so.
Yeah, no doubt.
I, I think the culverts would be the way to go though, if you can do it, Judge.
Yeah, if, if you can get the same, if you can get the same amount of flow, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Well, that's what I told, I mean, when I spoke with Cory the other day, I mean, we're gonna make sure that we add the culvert large enough for any future growth upstream as well, so, I mean.
All right, no action on three point three, any other question, whatever, what Cory's got on, um, the consent. Cory, I guess not, we will call you back if we need you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Austin's computer's frozen, I don't know these IT guys, they're doing over there, but. So we need to take a quick break, he's gonna cut his computer off, uh, it'll take about ten minutes and we'll come back.
Jimmy. Hey, did you, uh, did you talk? Did you talk to Larry Moore? You're, you're muted. You're muted, man.
Hold on just a minute, here, hold on a minute. All right, Court Committee Order. After short recess, it's ten forty-one AM.
Commissioner Tyce stepped away.
All right, we wait, we wait on Commissioner Tyce. I have BJ Simon on the phone. Morning BJ. All right, so we're going to economic development tourism, five point one. Consider amended and restated to three twelve agreements between Chambers County and Enterprise Products Operating LLC for PDH two, frac, so, uh, twelve, frac fourteen and PDH three, BJ.
Uh, thank you Judge, Mark Fisher, uh, you may recall back in December twenty nineteen, uh, the county had enterprise into a plan of tax payment agreements, based upon, uh, planned projects, uh, related to expansion. Um, obviously, business cycles changed and as noted in second recital, economic conditions twenty twenty, uh, construction schedule for this particular project, which is PDH two, uh, has been delayed approximately one year. Uh, in the interim, uh, Enterprise has requested the county extend the effective date of the abatement, um, as defined in the notice section of the original agreement and the term of the agreement. Coincident with that, the county requested that Enterprise modify the payments of taxes and pilot, uh, payments, uh, set forth in the original agreement. And essentially for this particular agreement, PDH two, um, those are the two changes. They've asked for the abatement to start or be effective, uh, in year twenty twenty-two. And then, uh, modify the actual, uh, pilot schedule by three months. Initially, on the last page, the pilot payment schedule, um, there was gonna be a payment that was to be made in June of twenty twenty-one, uh, in the amount of five point seven million dollars. Uh, they modified that per the county's request to kind of restructure, uh, the payments from the original agreement to seven point three million in, uh, September of twenty twenty-one. And then rebalance the remaining payments to one, uh, million three hundred three thousand six eight seven for years twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. And that's a simple modification from the original payments of one point four eight one billion. And so for PDH two, that is restatement and amendment presented to your, uh, review.
Okay, so what page is that on BJ?
Okay, uh, the last page, which, which is, which are you asking about Judge?
Um, that restatement of the pilot payments.
It is on, for PDH two, the agreement, it is on the very last page, notice exhibit C.
I, uh, I think in our packet, Judge, it might be thirty-one, exhibit C, is that it, payment schedule?
That's what I'm. Okay.
But is that the current or the proposed, the new?
That, that is the proposed amendment.
Okay, exhibit C.
I'm sorry.
All right, so this is the proposed, uh, abatement year one, instead of being, I'm trying to get straight in my mind, instead of being twenty-one, it's going to be twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty twenty-two is going to be the, the actual, um, the, the restated schedule, right, to, to be back to twenty twenty-two, it's gonna be twenty twenty-one. And now they are asking that the abatement start in twenty twenty-two. However, they're going to be making a modified pilot payment, which is increased per the court's request for five point seven million, which was originally due in June of twenty twenty-one. They're gonna be making it in September of twenty twenty-one and increasing that from five point seven million to seven point three billion.
Okay, I mean, I know we talked about all this, but it's been, um, it, it's, it's been a few weeks ago. Uh, so we're, what I'm, what I'm looking at, budget for twenty-one, so we're still, um, and I got Aaron in here, so we're still good on the money that we budgeted, what we're bringing in from Enterprise on three eighty-one agreement? Okay, I would just double check and make sure. And Aaron said yes also, so. All right, go ahead BJ.
Okay, so that's, that's for PDH two, and that's unique in the, in the event that they're simply asking, as allowed by statute, to, uh, change the effective date or delay the, uh, abatement to start one year. Remaining agreements, specifically for frac twelve, frac fourteen and PDH three, uh, because of the business cycle and the nature of the impact of COVID and others, there are two key definitions or three, uh, definitions that should be taken into consideration. So we can look at, uh, the fractionator twelve agreement, and essentially, uh, is going to cover, um, the remaining, uh, agreements for frac fourteen, frac, I mean, PDH three. So the request is to, are the amended and restated tax payment agreement. Uh, again, these agreements were approved back in December of twenty nineteen, uh, they note that economic conditions, um, has delayed or will delay the construction schedule. And note that second recital for frac twelve, that the construction schedule for the new facility has been delayed for a yet-to-be-determined period. So essentially, for these agreements for frac twelve, frac fourteen and PDH three, they're requesting that the framework where the incentive be maintained, that the construction start is yet to be determined. If you go to page two, um, of the frac twelve agreement, under definitions, there are, um, two key definitions. The first one, under two oh one.
Hang on just a minute BJ, can everybody find that? Anybody found?
He's faster than me, Judge.
Lot of paperwork here, what'd you say, Billy?
I said he's faster than me.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking to, give us a minute to find it.
Gotta find frac twelve, it's not identified separately in our packet.
Yeah.
And, and I wanna come back to the other one.
I found fourteen is, is the same verbiage in twelve and fourteen?
That's, that's correct, for fourteen, twelve and PDH three.
All right, so fourteen is what, where is it on fourteen?
Okay, on page fourteen.
No.
Or frac fourteen.
Frac fourteen.
Right, under definitions.
I'm looking.
Two zero one.
It, it does have a page number?
Page two.
Oh, page two, okay, thank you.
Is everybody there?
We're slow.
Yeah BJ, I, I think.
I found it, y'all find it?
What page?
Page fifty-one of our agenda package.
Got it.
Have I got it, page fifty-one? All right BJ, go ahead.
Okay, very good, under definitions, uh, two point zero one, uh, item A. The base year certified appraised value shall mean the appraised value of real property within the reinvestment zone certified by the appraisal district as of January one of the year that Enterprise sends with a notice of commencement of construction as defined below. So, uh, that, that's a key change from the original agreement where there was a specified date. Uh, given the nature of the ability for them to react to the changes in the business cycle, they are essentially saying that they will, uh, notify and the base year or January one of the year that, uh, Enterprise sends a notice of commencement to be that base year. Item B, per the defined base year, means that the year Enterprise actually sends to the county for each respective project. So that would be for frac fourteen, frac twelve and PDH three.
Okay BJ, I got a question, do you know what, um, the city of Mont Belvieu and, and the three eighty agreements and, uh, Barbershill School and three thirteen have done on these projects?
They're, they're doing the same thing, Judge, they're essentially trying to keep the, maintain the framework of incentives in place. So that if in fact, the economy recovers and they can move forward with the projects that they can't move forward with the entire framework, there are some unique modifications that are related to the chapter three thirteen agreement.
Right.
And don't know the specifics under the three eighty agreement for city of Mont Belvieu, if they are applicable, but all these projects are in the, uh, city of Baytown ETJ and that industrial district, so.
Okay.
Three eighty, well, longer applicable.
I, I got you, I didn't realize they were in the, uh, Baytown's ETJ.
BJ, can I go back to the, the first one where we were talking about the pilot payments again? And.
What page is that again, Billy?
Judge, if you look on page thirty-one in our.
Thirty-one, yeah.
And BJ, this is exhibit C on a PDH three. And so I look at it and it's showing abatement year one, five million seven hundred thousand be paid on June fifteen of abatement year one. And I think that's what you were telling us a while ago, that has been changed to seven point three. So when I go to page forty-nine on our agenda package, and I wanna make sure I'm hearing this right, BJ. Okay. Forty-nine, that's exhibit, uh, C, uh, the PDH two, same thing. And it's showing tax year twenty twenty-two paying the seven point three million. And that's coming in on nine fifteen of twenty twenty-two, I thought you just said a minute ago, that would be twenty twenty-one.
Uh, yeah, that's twenty twenty-one, that is the schedule for PDH two, because that project is greenlighting and going forward. So they simply asked that the abatement be delayed one year to twenty twenty-two. But the pilot schedule, uh, has only been modified from twenty twenty-one to September of twenty twenty-one. So that, PDH two is definitive because the project has been greenlighted and going forward. That is, PDH two and PDH three is that the commencement of the project is yet to be determined.
Okay, so in, in September of twenty-one, we get the seven point three million under this agreement, okay, thank you.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir Judge.
entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval Judge. Second.
Much goodbye to Commissioner Combs, second, Mr. Gore. All the questions, those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, motion carries, five point two, discussing exterior project Redfish and Center's recommendation, BJ.
Thank you Judge, Commissioners, uh, have, have been practicing recently for projects that are competitive, uh, been presenting, uh, overview recommendations for potential projects. This project, uh, noted, project Redfish is a project that is being contemplated by Revago America. Uh, Revago has been, um, located in, in Chambers County, in Tudorport, uh, since two thousand seventeen. Uh, I guess Revago is one, if not the, largest plastic distributor. Uh, I guess Revago is one, if not the, largest plastic distributor globally. What they're contemplating is, uh, an expansion of their plastics recycling and compounding operations. Essentially, they would be taking, uh, plastic, uh, uh, postbag scrap, uh, or less than value added, uh, re-excreting and adding value, uh, for certain customers or even for under their own brand. There is a competing site for this project that's, uh, located in Tennessee, specifically in Manchester, Tennessee, uh, and then the Revago complex in Cedarport is competing as well. As noted in the first paragraph, their competitive advantages for both sites, uh, currently their operations in Tennessee enjoys, uh, the benefit of existing operations in close proximity to their customers. Uh, the Texas site, you know, has some advantages related to supply chain, who their customers are, who they get this material from. Uh, real estate, they own a hundred and seventy acres in Cedarport, which they're only using currently, um, about a hundred and eight for their current location. Um, the growth for potential, uh, growth potential, uh, in Texas is another advantage that Cedarport may have. Um, in addition to this project Redfish, Revago is, uh, contemplating some additional product development that could advantage the Cedarport, um, location. So, uh, just a brief profile, noted, the competing site for this project is Manchester, Tennessee. Capital expenditures anywhere between fifty to sixty million dollars, uh, potential job creation between fifty and sixty full-time jobs, uh, hundred construction jobs, and the, uh, estimated startup period is second quarter of twenty twenty-two. Um, and what we've tried to do in the past is to illustrate economic impact. Uh, given the unique nature of this project, it doesn't fall neatly within any particular, uh, uh, industrial industry code, so we've looked at and provided an analysis under all other plastics product manufacturing, uh, and looking at potential impact in Chambers County of fifty-five jobs. And, uh, you see the direct, indirect, and induced impact for a project of this size. Essentially, the sales output that's noted there is simply, uh, the impact of having these jobs in the county and, uh, sales related, uh, to that. Uh, so that the wage, um, range essentially for this would be anywhere between forty-four thousand to sixty-two thousand dollars a year. And you'll note that the multiplier effect is considerable, as noted on the second table, uh, one point seven six to one point eight three. So that's, uh, the overview of the project, what's being re- recommended, given that Revago has current operations in Chambers County. Um, and, uh, this is a business retention expansion project, uh, recommendation for consideration is that the county consider offering, given that a competitive, uh, project, a ten-year abatement at sixty percent, which is currently the same schedule that they have with their current abatement, which was executed in twenty seventeen.
So what's their, what, wha- what's their current investment in the county, BJ?
Yeah, right now, uh, the value of the facility is right at seventy-six million, their twenty twenty, um, valuation. And they, uh, had inventory or total value of land and inventory of a hundred and fifty-two million.
What about, how many employees do they have now? Do you have that handy?
Yeah, uh, they, a hundred and fifty.
You may have said that and I missed it, sorry.
Yes.
Is, is this about the same?
Aaron visited the facility recently and, uh, Commissioner Combs requested, yeah, how many, uh, folks are from Chambers County, and they have noted about twenty percent. And we're confirming that as part of the survey, uh, for all, uh, contract holders of abatement that are going to be presented to the court. And I will say that the hundred and fifty jobs is much more than they anticipated, uh, when they presented the request for, uh, tax payment back in twenty seventeen.
Is this, is our abatement about the same as what they're offering up there in Tennessee, or do you know?
Sorry, say again, Commissioner?
They ask about the, the abatement, ours versus Tennessee, is it about the same?
Uh, the Tennessee, um, location, there, there, there is no, the upper line tax, uh, there's a credit, uh, so they pay no tax, uh, in, in Tennessee, I mean, it's really competitive. Um, the big advantage is that, uh, they have here, or would have here, in fact, they cited here, is proximity to their customer base. Uh, Chevron Phillips, ExxonMobil, Neos, I mean, they're receiving product now from Old Ocean Sweeney from Chevron Phillips, for example. Um, but the tax advantage, the tax environment in Tennessee is much more appealing.
Yeah, I ju- I just, I just wanted people to understand that we're doing, um, what we can to attract industry to our county to further our tax base. I, I appreciate that, BJ.
Yeah, the schedules that are noted in the attachment, Commissioner, uh, you know, shows, you know, potential of a tax, of a, a ten-year tax abatement, two schedules. Uh, one where you, you know, the county would consider, you know, under ten-year term, the first five years would be the customary schedule for a five-year tax abatement, and then modify that for the second five years. And you see the, uh, potential impact there, uh, just a fifty-nine percent tax abatement, uh, and they would pay forty-one percent of taxes. But just as a matter of note, the judge, uh, asked about what their current value was as of, uh, twenty twenty. Um, in their current tracks, uh, they will be, uh, paying the county a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars based upon the percentage of forty percent tax abatement. And, uh, however, they're also going to be paying three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in inventory debt.
Makes a difference.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah, it's five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars from their current operation. And so if this project moves forward, and the, the amount of inventory that is going to be, uh, you know, provided or, uh, developed at the site, those numbers are only going to grow.
Yeah. And I know, I, you know, Tennessee, you, you, there's no taxes, tax credit, I, I, Louisiana does the same thing, we're competing.
That's correct.
Really outstanding tax payments.
You know, something we haven't really touched on here, I think, is important to note. This is a, the technology that they're doing for the recycling of the plats, uh, plastic is pretty advanced technology, and it's something that I think we would really benefit from having in Chambers County, given all the plastic distribution and manufacturing that we have here. Uh, this, this looks like a project that is, I think is well-needed in the area, and it's something that all of the manufacturers of plastic are, are looking for in this technology to recycle the plastic.
Mm-hmm. Motion by Commissioner Combs?
Second, no, I can't second it, I motioned it.
I'll second it, your honor.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tass. You have questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five point three. Public hearing, ten AM, regarding amendments to Clay Partners Cedarport Phase two, uh, Phase three, number one LP and Clay Partners Cedarport Phase three, number two LP tax payment agreement. All right, so it's eleven oh two AM, we were going to public hearing at this time, on five point three on the agenda, BJ, you want to explain a little bit?
Uh, yes, yes, this, this may be a two for covered two pieces of business, uh, this, uh, amendment of public hearing is conducted to discuss and consider an amendment to the tax payment, uh, between Clay Partners Cedarport Base Street number one LP and Clay Partners Cedarport Base Street number two LP. Uh, the amendment request was submitted to the court on October thirteenth. Uh, given their coincident with the requests for amendment, they've also requested the assignment of the amended agreement. So the first step, uh, to, uh, parse out the two entities, uh, Cedarport Phase three number one, Cedarport Phase three number two, is to amend the agreement to reflect, uh, the assignment, essentially, uh, exercising the Clay Partners Cedarport Phase three number two from the existing agreement. The intent, when the court approved the abatement back in March, uh, twenty nineteen, was that Clay intended to build two buildings. Number one and number two, um, being circumstances, changes in the business cycle, and a number of other things, uh, have disallowed them from doing that. Uh, so prior to the court, being able to assign the agreement, which they approved, the court approved the assignment, you know, as allowable by statutes and also in the original agreement. The, the agreement has to be amended to reflect a single building, which is Clay Partners Cedarport Phase three number one. And so that's what's presented for consideration today.
Go ahead.
I believe that's the public hearing part of it, right?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, we are still in the public hearing, any public comments? Uh, there were none that came in, none from the, uh, Commissioners. All right, so we will adjourn out of the public hearing at ten, eleven oh four AM, go back into regular session of Commissioners' court. Five point four, discuss and consider amendment of the Clay Partners Port Phase three, number one LP, Clay Partners Cedarport Phase three, number two LP tax abatement agreement. Now we're at, Billy.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tass, questions? Hear none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, BJ, thank you so much.
Thank you, BJ.
Commissioners, happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, same to you. All right, Parks Recreation, uh, six one, discuss consider set donation survey. Parcel four two two seven, Cedric Green from outdoor basketball court in Hancock, Texas. Uh, let's take all three of them together, uh, six two is, uh, discuss consider proven Cowboys asphalt related outdoor basketball court. I took seed fifty-five hundred, six three, discuss consider having the Parks Department's total six foot, uh, three foot, uh, six foot fence, three foot off the road, materials only, uh, materials on hand around the outdoor basketball court in Hancock, Texas. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Gore.
Yes, sir, I mean, we've, we've looked at this here, and the, um, I believe we can address the safety issues with the, the fencing that we had on hand, um, the court. Um, it'd be an added benefit to that, that neighborhood, um, I mean, I'll make a, a motion that we approve it.
You making a motion to approve all three?
All three, six one, six two, and six three, Judge. I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tass, right, or Combs?
Combs.
Mr. Gore, second by Commissioner Combs. Question?
And, and Judge, for clarification, they, they, uh, took the house out of the, out of the deal, didn't they?
Yeah, it's.
Surveyed it out.
Well, it's on the opposite side of that, um, gully, and so, yes, sir, we're going to survey out that little portion right there.
Yeah, I just, I just noticed it was in the, you know, it was in the, on the tax record, it's one parcel.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it'll have to be surveyed out, we'll, we'll have to, uh, accept the property for it, we're doing work on it. I have a motion in the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, I think I covered everything else. Uh, let's start with, where did we start last time?
One.
Start, let's start at four, Commissioner Combs.
Okay, hang on a minute, uh, on, uh, item number six, I'd like to take that back to executive session with us.
Item number six.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And on item number thirteen, I would like to let, believe Glenn an opportunity to address the, uh, Commissioners if he would like to.
All right, we'll, Lorna, get him on the phone. Uh, Glenn for item thirteen.
Okay. And I think I got everything else answered, uh, yesterday.
Okay. Precinct three, Gary.
Uh, yeah, if I get this microphone turned on, um, item number twelve, I want to comment that, uh, I thought that was a lot of money for us box, but seeing that the cost was seventeen thou- or sixteen thousand, I want to commend Bill for getting us a good deal on a sixteen thousand dollar freezer.
Yeah.
That's how long, if you don't mind, Judge.
This has to do with the, um, the, the vaccinations that are coming.
Uh, this went from sixteen anticipated cost to ten?
No, no, that's what they cost, sixteen, sixteen thousand, we got it down to ten thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's a, that's an excellent job.
Yeah.
Maybe need to put them in merch. And the other item was, um, see, I, I thought I wrote, I thought I put a line under it. Cause it was something. I, I don't see it here, Judge, I.
Well, while you, you, we'll go on if you find it, we'll come back to you. All right, so precinct two, Mark.
Uh, Judge Billy stole my thunder, uh, you can throw five in there along with six for, uh, executive.
Oh, you want to take five also?
Yeah, probably not, let's just stick with six, we should be good, Judge.
Okay.
Hey, I did, I did, I don't know where it said, Judge, but it, I know what it was about, oh, I know, it's seventeen. I'm just curious, uh, do we have a picture of these, these tables? Or not?
A picture of those tables?
Yeah, I mean, how many can they seat, do you know?
Probably.
I don't know, I've seen the picture, but, uh, Gary, I.
Probably five and five, huh, Judge, five on the side?
I don't remember. Yeah, they're circular table.
Oh, they are.
Do we know, do we know where they're going to put them?
Uh, at around the, um, health department there, Gary.
In the parking lot, or, you know, I mean, I mean, I was just.
No, not in the parking lot, in the, in the grassy areas. I thought we had a, a layout where they were going. It's, uh, seventeen.
Now, I spoke with Mary Beth a little bit about this also, cause I wanted to make sure that, um, uh, one of them was handicap accessible, so she had checked in on that, and I think you're gonna make sure one of them's handicap accessible as well, so.
It must be pretty heavy, is what I, you know, I was saying, cause.
They are, they're like the ones we installed at the Winnie Arena, I mean, they're coated, they're very heavy.
Yeah, he's got to use.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I, I just thought, I mean, the market was a big number, you know, and I just.
He probably just read it.
What those things look, look, looked like.
Yeah, we'll get you a picture of them. I, I've never seen them.
You did see them.
Okay, anything else, Gary?
That's it.
All right, back to Mark, you're done, uh, Jimmy?
I'm done, Judge.
Well, I spoke with George yesterday, and I mean, on the fourteen oh nine project, I mean, we're doing good on that, and I think we're up to like sixty-five hundred dollars on change orders, so I think, I think Cory now has been keeping the contract and everything in real good check on this here. Uh, I want to congratulate him on that there as well.
Yeah, and the pro- I, I actually, um, toured the project on Thursday morning, and it looks great.
I want, uh, number thirty-eight, nineteen thirty-eight, Judge, I want to pressure and comment on that, because that truck, we could have already had that truck back in like July from BJ Ford, but, uh, with mis- miscommunication or dragon feed or whatever, uh, we're wound up, we're not going to get that truck, and it's about the same price now until May or June of next year. And I mean, with our mosquito control, um, kicking off in like February, I mean, we really needed that truck, so we need to make sure our department heads work in conjunction with our purchasing agent to, to.
Stay ahead of it.
Yeah, because I mean, that there's, that there's a big jump in, in getting that truck into next year with her, with that there, so I wanted to just comment on that there. But besides that, no, everything was good. That's all I had, Judge.
All right, um, so we're taking number six to executive session. Uh, I don't have, everything else is ready to be voted on. So I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tass, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct, sir.
All right, hear no other questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It's going to, okay, so let's, um, we voted on it, but let's go back to it, I've got, hang on. Uh, what number was Glenn? Uh, what number was Glenn, safety?
1913.
All right, we're going back to 13. Approve of the new Chambers County Safety Program with appendices, as well as updating our tech safety resolution. Glenn? Can you hear me? All right, Commissioner's asked to get you on and let you just kind of explain what you got here. We've actually already voted on it, so you don't have to go too deep in it. Good morning.
Actually, the, uh, the safety program that did not present with appendices is what we've been working on essentially since I started working here. Want to make some, some strides and efforts to improve in the overall workplace safety for all the Chambers County. We have to set a benchmark before we can do that. And that's essentially what that program is, will be our overall program for all county departments. Now, where there are things in there that will not apply to some departments that don't utilize, for instance, machinery, but there is, uh, the office procedures in there that don't apply to the guys that run bridges that are out in the field. So that is our generic overall safety program. There are a couple of appendices that are not, um, complete because of the group effort that's required to encompass public health EMS and so forth. So those will be presented independently and added at later date.
Questions? Okay. Anybody have questions?
I would just like to express my thanks to Glenn for working on this and getting it started. It's something we've been needing to get started and I know it's going to take, it's going to be a living document. It's going to be fine-tuned a little bit, but he worked very hard on it and has sought a lot of input. And I want to encourage our department heads and everyone to look at it and give feedback and, uh, work with him. It's very important to everybody. I was happy to see our safety award again this year and hopefully we can improve on that.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn, for all the hard work. All right, is there anybody else have anything?
Judge, I just want to commend Glenn too, uh, and basically, I don't want to repeat Billy's comment, but I, I agree. I think we're off to a good start there, Your Honor.
All right, thanks, Glenn. Have a good Thanksgiving. We'll see you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks so much.
Take care. So it's 11:17 a.m. We're going to recess out of the regular session of Commissioners Court and we'll take number six on the consent and then we also have some other items for executive session. 20.1, uh, receive offer on sale of real estate, respond if necessary regarding disposition or continuing negotiation. 22, 20.2, discuss personnel issues. 20.3, discuss and consider applicants for the position of county attorney and appointment and individual, and appoint an individual to the position effective upon the office vacancy, which will be January 1. 20.4, discuss and consider whether to dispose of county property located off of Mount Olive Lane, Baytown, Texas, location known as Victoria Walker Park, and which method of disposition to use under Local Government Code 263, public auctions, sealed bid, broker or property exchange. So 11:18 a.m., we will recess out of the regular session and go into executive session at this time and take a five-minute break. All right, Chambers County Commissioners Court, come to order after executive session at 2:02 p.m. Time we need to vote on is under consent, number six, approve payroll changes.
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore. Any questions? Those in favor?
Uh, name?
One name, Commissioner Tass? Okay, nothing else under consent. We're going to executive session. 20.1, I think we need some action on it. Billy, you got a motion?
I think I've got it, uh, and it's, uh, make a motion to approve the sale of approximately 1.5 acres county property in Mount Bubu, Texas for, uh, we, do we going to say the amount?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I mean, that's why it was agreed to, so.
And authorize the county judge to sign and sell his contract as amended to convey a warranty deed and further authorize the judge to work with the real estate broker to take necessary steps to finalize the transaction.
Motion by Commissioner Nelson, second by, was that Combs? I mean, Gore? Second by Commissioner Combs, any questions? Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. 20.2 is table. 20.3. 20.4, let's do 20, go back to 20.3. Commissioner Combs?
Yes, sir, I have a motion on that. Motion to dispose of county real properties, specifically Victoria Walker Park through a sealed bid procedure pursuant to Local Government Code 263.007. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore, any questions?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 20.3, discuss and consider applicants for the position of county attorney and appoint an individual to the position effective upon the office vacancy. For the record, we had three applicants, a walker with county attorney's office, office, Ashley Kane Land, county attorney's office, and then Charles Neal, local attorney. And after interviewing during executive session, I'll entertain a motion if someone's ready to.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve Ashley Kane Land as our new county attorney effective upon, uh, the office vacancy.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Tass, second by Commissioner Nelson. Questions? All three candidates were very good candidates, the two that we interviewed, did a great job on the interview.
All right, great.
Going wrong with anyone that's appointed. With that, no other questions, comments, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Glenn. All right, I think we covered everything. Has anybody seen anything that we missed?
No, sir, Judge. I mean, I can't see anything.
All right, with that, till 6 p.m., court is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys. Y'all have. Happy Thanksgiving to all, yeah.
Y'all as well.
Take care. And I, here's the most, is the thing we really need to be thankful for, 20 is almost due. Yeah.